All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's February 28th and Councilman Bill Shacklet has our prayer. And then when the prayer is over, I want to introduce a group of Cub Scouts who are here that are going to give our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you that you are in our lives, that you're in the work of this community for all those that labor daily to serve our citizens. Lord, we thank you for this country that we live in, for this great state, and Lord, for this blessed community that we live in, and for all those that keep us safe and provide services to our citizens. Lord, we just pray that you'd empower them, strengthen them, give them strength, a body and a mind and a spirit, to do that which you've called them to do and to be that which you've called them to be. Bless this evening, bless the conduct of our business of the community. Lord, may we be found worthy in being faithful stewards of a living Lord Jesus. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, from PAC 538, they are led by Jeff, and I want to make sure I say this right, Edge, is that right? Or I can't, make sure, it looks like an E-A-G, Edge. PAC 538 from St. Rose. And doing the pledge tonight, we have Aiden Flores. Aiden, if y'all go to the podium, Gabriel Spire, Zachary Smith, Micah Camper, Clark Edge, and then working on his citizenship and community badge, Blake Wilks.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
And (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Blake, thanks, gentlemen. You guys can have a seat. And Blake, if you don't mind standing up, I see you back there. Yeah, Blake's working on his citizenship and community badge. So thank you for coming tonight, Blake. We appreciate you working on that. All right, we have one ceremonial item. All right, we have a talented group of young men who are here. Many of these young men I have seen growing up since they were playing soccer when they were five and six. So I want to introduce tonight the 2004 Stryker Boys. If y'all would come up, maybe stand behind the podium here. All right, let me read you about this team. Whereas through its disciplined dedication and hard work, the '04 Stryker Boys experienced a spectacular season proudly representing Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and Tennessee. Whereas Coach Suarez, and the coaches, if y'all want to come up too. Coach Suarez received the MSC Select Coach of the Year in 2018. In addition to the team competing in the State Cup Championship game in three consecutive seasons, the 2000 team has earned the finalist title in the past two seasons of the State Cup. And whereas the team started out with all new members in August 2016 and somehow found a way to become an amazing team and worked hard to win the D3 championship by going undefeated. And whereas in the summer of 2016, the 2004 Stryker Boys had a goal of competing in D2. With this goal in mind, Coach Suarez offered vigorous summer workout program, and the team continued to show their coach and parents how much work they had in them and amazed themselves and others with their efforts. Whereas because of their spirit and determination, they competed in the Tennessee D2 State Cup Tournament, beating out 21 teams and won the championship to become the state champions. However, the season was not over. This accomplishment has led to the '04 Stryker Boys being invited to represent Tennessee in Round Rock, Texas, in the 2019 Youth Soccer Southern Presidents' Cup. This team's journey is far from over, it's just beginning. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, do hereby proclaim February 28, 2019, is a day to recognize the 2004 Stryker Boys and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and honoring the significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety the team and its coaches have brought to our city.[414.02][414.02](applause) on the soccer fields and the amount of resources they also spend to go to these tournaments. So if our parents will stand up, that'd be great, too.[490.81][490.81](applause) And while I'm down here, unless y'all want to stay for the entire city council meeting, you're free to, but y'all are free to go. So congratulations.[506.78][506.78](laughing) I'm shocked that they didn't stay.[516.16][516.16](laughing) All right, our next, Mr. Tucker, you've got a big act to follow right now. So Greg Tucker's going to tell us a little bit about some history of Murfreesboro.
You let all my audience get out.[544.16][544.16](laughing) Well, it's a short month and we've just about used it up, so that shows a short topic. But Mr. Mayor, I need your help with some spelling to get us started.
Sure.
I know you've done competitive spelling.
And you're not going to tell that I was the first one eliminated in the spelling bee, so.[565.32][565.32](laughing)
You lost, right?
I did.
You did, all right. Would you please spell for me and everybody else the name Murfreesboro?
Murfreesboro. M-U-R-F-R-E-E-S-B-O-R-O, unless we're saying M-U-R-P-H-R-E-E. So can I phone a friend?[587.41][587.41](laughing)
He's more confused than I thought he'd be.[592.29][592.29](laughing) You did say capital M, didn't you?[595.41][595.41](laughing) Matter of respect, that's a proper noun.
I'm going to call Mr. Tucker to, you're out of order.[604.29][604.29](laughing)
All right, you spelled it, if I heard it right, like it is over your head, M-U-R-F-R-E-E-S-B-O-R-O. That's legally correct and historically ignorant.[618.41][618.41](laughing)
You are the weakest link, goodbye.[622.82][622.82](laughing)
In 1811, when the state legislature appointed a number of fellows to select a site for a new city, they specified that this new town would be called Murfreesboro, named for Colonel Hardy Murfree, Revolutionary War hero, whose children owned about 50,000 acres in Rutherford and Williamson County. And they spelled it M-U-R-F-R-E-E-S-B-O-R-O-U-G-H. Murfree, the name, and Borough, the English word for a town larger than a village, the early expressions, or later it meant a self-governing municipality, a borough, B-O-R-O-U-G-H. I'm frequently asked, what happened to the UGH? What happened to the UG? If you look at your city charter, the original city charter, 1817, as we've celebrated recently, they spell it with the UGH. In the first act of the legislature expanding the city boundaries, which was in 1837, they very carefully spell it correctly with the UGH. But then, I guess people started getting lazy because the next act, instead of spelling out the UGH, they put an apostrophe. Murfreesboro with an apostrophe and no UG, UGH on the end. When they authorized the election of constables in Rutherford County, they did it again in about 1850 with an apostrophe for the UGH. The legal name, though, at that time was still spelled with the UGH on the end. So in 1856, when the legislature gave the mayor and alderman full authority to govern the city, they very specifically spelled the name in full, Murfreesboro, with the UGH on the end. We went into the Civil War and during, in 1866, the first year under the Reconstruction Legislature, the Yankee legislators spelled it without the UGH. In late 1860s, again, when they enacted legislation affecting our county, they spelled it without the UGH, technically using the improper, not the legal name. But apparently, I guess in large part because people were getting lazy and it had become a common custom to leave off the UGH. Finally, in 1905, the 1817 Charter was revoked and a new charter was entered. And in 1905, the legal spelling of the name of our fair city became Murfreesboro without a UGH. When I'm asked, so what happened and why it's the UGH, there's absolutely no comment or explanation in the record as to why they dropped the UGH. But my answer is usually, during Reconstruction, the Yankees killed it. Thank you.[829.86][829.86](laughing)
Mr. Tucker, let me ask you a question, because I know Nashboro Village, or Nashborough was Nashville originally, Port Nashborough. And it came out of-
You're asking me about Nashville history? That's out of my jurisdiction.
Well, I'm going to get to Murfreesboro in just a second. I was led to believe that the British terminology fell out of vogue and that the disdain for the support of federal and Union troops during the Civil War did the same thing in the South as far as a disdain for northern, for England, I'm sorry. And that disdain for England was one of the driving measures of why it was changed?
No.
Just a good guess.
The name of Nashborough, which was pre-revolution or in the Revolution period, they did drop the Borough because the English at that time were, as you say, out of favor or the enemy, and they went to the Veal. But there's no record support that that was carried over to the Civil War period. In fact, if you remember, England and the Civil War managed to support both sides and, you know, kind of hedging their bets.
Well, somewhat, it's both sides, yeah.
Yeah, try again on Saturday, Eddie.
I will. See you at Ransom Schoolhouse Saturday morning from nine until 12 for coffee and conversation. And everybody's invited to come, we'd love to see you there. Lots of local history discussed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, we have the consent agenda. Make a note, item 11 has been removed to be brought back at a further date. Do you have any other questions for any items that are on the... All right, can we get a motion?
I move to approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
With the exception of 11, okay.
All right, motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have the minutes from the December 20th, 2018, January 9th, 2019, January 17th, 2019 meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Mayor, Mr. Martin called something to my attention, that's a typo, I am going to correct that on the December 20th.
Okay. Always have an overachiever in the group.[988.76][988.76](laughing)
I appreciate it. I miss Miss Georgia.[995.01][995.01](laughing)
All right.
With that change, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into old business ordinance, 18076, second and final reading, zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to multifamily residential uses in the MU zoning district.
Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to ordinance, 18073, amending zoning in the Sunset Ridge PRD along Sunray Drive. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval. Take it.
Motion in a second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 22, ordinance, 18074, second and final reading, rezoning approximately 18.7 acres CF located along Veterans Parkway and Kingdom Drive.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 23, ordinance, 18075, second and final reading, rezoning approximately 1.96 acres PRD located along Veterans Parkway. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Just real briefly, you recall, on this item located on the eastern side of Veterans Parkway on first reading, it's a PRD zoning request for the Kingdom Crest Clubhouse. There was some discussion and several points that were made, and the applicant was going to revise the pattern book prior to second reading. I've laid the revised pattern book at your desks for your reference, and the two main changes that were made, or the two changes that were made consistent with the discussion at the January 31st city council meeting were the clarification that a privacy fence would be added to both the north and south property lines. In addition to the type D buffer, and that language is clear, sometimes people can use a privacy fence to reduce the number of plantings, but this privacy fence is actually in addition to the standard amount of plantings that would be in a type D buffer yard. The second change, if you recall, there was some discussion about hours of operation of the clubhouse and the pool. They have put in the pattern book, the hours of operation will be limited to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that would be a part of the zoning, the pattern book, and that would be enforceable as a part of the zoning for the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Swanson, the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions?
No questions, I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now hear from Joe Pasting Associates with regards to our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year June 30 of 2018.
Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here to present this audit. Actually, a little disappointed, I thought I had a big crowd, but apparently they've all left, so. But I wanted to go over the audit for the last fiscal year and kind of give you an overview. There's 208 pages in this report, so I'd like to go over every one, but I won't.[1263.01][1263.01](laughing)
You fired.[1265.58][1265.58](laughing)
We could do it. If you turn to the tab that, well, first of all, I should say that this report is already available on the website, and it's out there for any citizen that might be interested in that. And we do appreciate all the help from Melissa Wright and her department provided. They, as usual, very helpful and cooperative and patient with us during the length of time it takes to go through this. If you'll turn to the first tab that says independent auditor's report, starts with page one there. This is the standard audit report. It's an unmodified or clean opinion. So that is, even though it's fairly long, it is just a standard clean opinion on the report. So that's the first item. And one thing, the next tab there is called management's discussion and analysis. That's several pages of just what it says, the discussion from management of what the highlights of the city have been for the past fiscal year. And it gives a good overview for anyone who wants to just take a quick look. There's probably about 20 pages there that go into the highlights of this last fiscal year, so that's always useful. As you flip back, there's a tab called government-wide financial statements. The city, and all cities, have two presentations of their financial statement. One is an overview that includes all the assets and liabilities of the city, which would include long-term liabilities like bonds, it would include fixed assets and infrastructure like roads and buildings, and it includes everything that the city owns. And on page 24, this is the balance sheet from that perspective, which, like I said, includes all the assets. And if you'll look there, there's two columns, one for government activities and one for business-type activities. Business-type activities would be those utilities, the electric department, water and sewer, the type of activities that are financed through fees to the users. And governmental activities include all the other departments, the general fund, the police, the school systems, all the other government-type activities. And you'll see there's a total column there. If you look down the list there, you'll see the assets starting first and total assets at the end of the fiscal year, they're in the total column, or $1.8 billion for total assets of the city. Again, that combines the utilities and then all the city government assets as well. Going down the list, you'll see the liabilities, including all the long-term debt, bonds, any current debts. One thing to point out, there's a big liability there in the governmental activities column is called OPEB liability. It's $112 million. That's a new accounting principle that came into play this year. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which in this case mostly means health insurance provided to retirees. And what they've done different is, the principle is that all our current employees will someday retire and earn these benefits in most cases. So the expense is really accrued now while the employees are working. Instead of waiting till retirement when we actually pay those benefits, the accounting principles now require us to put that liability on the books. And you can see, that's a huge liability, but all cities are having to deal with that. It is, it's an actuarial determined amount, so there's a lot of assumptions about how many people will eventually earn those benefits, how long their lifespans will be, and all kinds of assumptions go into that liability. So that's a very long-term liability, but it's important to point out. And you'll see down below, the net position is the total assets less all the total liabilities. And at the end of the year, the total amount was over $1 billion for the city as a whole. The next page is 25. This is called the Statement of Activities. And again, this includes a long-term approach. It includes things like depreciation on assets. It's more of a, closer to a business-type view of city operations rather than the traditional approach. And I won't go through everything here, but the way it's laid out is, it shows the expenses first. For instance, if you look at the police department, which is a second line there, total expenses for the year were $37 million, $37 and a half million. And then the next few columns show what types of revenues were generated to support those expenses. And the police department, as you know, there's not a lot of internally-produced revenues, there's fees and that sort of thing, so the net is a negative or expenditure of $36.9 million. And those expenses, of course, have to be supported by taxes and other sources of revenue. But for each department, you can see that result there. And then down below, it shows the other, the general revenues such as property taxes that support those functions. So that's that view of the city. Now, the traditional view is just based on a budget approach. So if you flip over to page 26, that's the traditional view, and this is the balance sheet. And all this includes is just the current assets and current liabilities. It's what is available for this coming budget and what we have to pay out in liabilities out of those assets. So it's more of a short-term view, on a budget view of what resources are available. Traditionally, we look at, like for the general fund, fund balance is an important figure to look at. If you look down at the bottom of the first column, the general fund at the end of the year had unassigned fund balance of $53.3 million. Now that's about 49% of your total general fund expenditures, so it's about half a year of reserve, basically. So that's a pretty strong statement there in the financials. And you'll see the other major funds, the general school fund and debt service fund And if you flip over to page 28, this is the revenues and expenditures for the year, and it's on a more of a traditional budget-type presentation there. And you'll see the general fund, for instance, for the year had total revenues of $144.7 million. And going on down, the expenditures for the year were $108 million. And then the next statement on page- And then the next statement on page 30 begins the general fund detail. This is more detail, and it shows the actual expenditures compared to the budget for the year. And there are several pages of that, so that's very detailed. But as you go further back, there is more and more detail here. Like I said, I'm just going to hit a few highlights here. Starting on page 48, there's lots of pages of notes that describe things such as the pension plan, the OPEB plan that I was talking about. It describes the debt that the city has, bonds and types of debt that it has. There's lots of explanation about different items like that, capital assets that the city owns in more detail about that. Now, one thing that's, back in the statistical section, which is near the back, there's a tab there for that. This section gives a lot of information for the past 10 years, so it's useful in trying to see where the city's been, and it often shows here that there's been tremendous growth here. For instance, on page 171, there's a column there that shows the last 10 years of different taxes. The middle column there is sales tax, and you'll see that in 2009, the city collected just over $28 million in sales tax. This past year, ended in 18, the city collected $46.4 million. You can see the growth there over the last 10 years. On page 179, there's some information about debt at the city, and it also gives information, statistics, like per capita debt. And one thing to note here, you can see a 10-year trend here. 2009, the per capita debt was $3,378 for citizens. In 2018, it was still $3,332, so that number has not grown. Of course, our population has grown quite a bit, but the debt in proportion to that population has stayed about the same, so.
Would the reason for the property tax not increasing anywhere close to the rate of sales tax, even with the population growth that you mentioned, would that be because of the revenue-neutral adjustments that we make in order not to increase our property tax rate? Is that what's causing that?
Yeah, I think absolutely. It's because the rates haven't been effectively.
So the rates have offset it, so the only change in that number is caused by additional?
More people paying taxes.
More people paying taxes and growth.
Additional property added and.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Assessed values going up because of the addition of new houses. Another page concerning the debt, page 182. What this schedule is, is legal debt margin. The city charter actually allows the city's debt, it can't exceed 15% of the total assessed property value. So what this schedule does is compute the total debt that would be legally allowed and compares that to the debt that actually is out there. And you're at about 53% of the total legal margin, or the total legally allowed. And you can compare that to 10 years ago as well. 10 years ago, the city was at 57.7%. So in that section, there's other information about just various statistics of the city and lots of information there. Back in the last tab, the single audit section. This whole section details all the federal grant monies that have come through the city. This includes the department they come through, Department of Housing, Department of Justice, Department of Transportation, and it just outlines every federal grant that comes through the city. And then there's a schedule of state grants as well. Now, our audit, we're required to test the compliance with those grants, and so part of our audit is making sure that the city's complying with the grant restrictions and grant requirements. And back on page 202, it's just an overall summary of the results of the audit. Basically, that just says that we did have a clean opinion, and in this case, this year, we had no reportable findings, so that's also stated here. That is a high view of this report, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and represent you as the council in doing this audit, so thank you. Glad to answer any questions, anyone has.
I'd like to personally thank Melissa and her team and you all for working so hard on this. We're so proud of your firm. I see now why you all always get the national recognition for government services. And I'd like for us guys to maybe have a workshop on understanding this report, because I'm the first one to admit I don't totally understand it. But the little I do understand, and I want to be corrected in my thinking. According to your report, the city of Murfreesboro, financially, we look great. We look very good financially.
Right. It's, you know, I think the indicators are that it's in very good financial position. The reserve is one of those things that you look at, and it's certainly solid, so yes, it's in good shape financially.
Okay, and I'm one, my son goes crazy when I do this. I'm one kind of look in the future a little bit. And correct me if I'm wrong. I understand the position we are in now, but in my spirit, I feel that we are beginning to slightly trend negatively financially. Is that, I mean, we are beginning, just a snip, beginning to trend on the negative side. Can, is that a pretty good statement? Just beginning to, even though we're in great shape, but we, it's a possibility from what I'm understanding, we're beginning to trend on the other side just a little bit. Is that correct?
I don't know, I don't know that I would categorize it that way.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, certainly, management is responsible to monitor things, and I think that's being done, so.
You may say that we used part of our fund balance this past year, but we made some conscious decisions of things that we wanted to do to use that fund balance, and that may happen more in the future. But I think, other than things that we consciously have done, I think our trend has shown that we're doing very well.
And it's nothing negative against anybody. I'm just, when I say "we," I mean, we're responsible.
As a city.
As a city for this. Okay.
I think one thing to point out there is that, like in the general fund, only about $322,000 was used from the fund balance this past year.
But we did have some one-time revenues as well, where we've sold property or some assets.
We had the revenue on the gateway land closing that we had originally budgeted last year. When I say "year."
Right. We're off a year.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that was four point, the Vanderbilt sale. What was that?
Yeah, that's about right. I think the other thing that we need to consider too is, in fairness to what we're talking about, this is an audit, so it really looks kind of backwards. What you're asking is looking forward, and we will do that. We'll do that during our budget process, because I think it's important. We've been fortunate in the past years that we've had one-time revenue that have come in, and what we don't want to do on a trend is mistake one-time revenue for ongoing revenues. And because we have ongoing liabilities that we want to match with that, so we have to be very careful of that as we go forward.
On page 180, there's a estimated population, and in 2009, it had us about 101,000. In 2017, we were up at 131, almost 132,000. In 2018, it shows we went down 10,000. What is that reflecting?
In 2018 is when we did our special census. So what hap, there's, our special censuses are conducted as an actual count, so we actually count what people are coming in, as opposed to the US Census. And the way the US Census, they take statistical data and they make certain reasonable assumptions to determine what a population would be. And so what happens is, in the past few years, I think what was used was the US Census Bureau, because that's what, the best source of information we have. And then we did our count in 2018, so it looked like we dropped down. But we're going to, if you try and do an actual count of it, population, you're always going to come in lower, because not everybody's going to respond. It's just impossible to get all that. What, so when we recognize and we run ratios on debt ratios and everything else, what we need to be cautious of is to use the right population count. And if you use this US Census Bureau, which is what's used in a lot of years and what a lot of is used for calculating ratios, then you get a much better statistical analysis of what we're doing. There's reasons to do both, but that's really what you see there. You see the result of trying to count people as opposed to looking at all the statistical data that goes into another type of count.
But in 2018, we're showing 10,000 less people. Is that just because of?
Because we guessed 131.
We've been using the US Census estimate until we got an actual count.
So our, on the last column, or our debt per capita out there, that would, that number skewed by that.
Right. Yeah, that would be. If you look at the US Census, I don't have it in front of me, but we're around 135 in round numbers if you use US Census estimates. You know, they don't count, but they do statistical analysis. They look at, I mean, they look at things like building permits. They use a lot of data to come in with an estimate of what population is. What you see reflected there, that 122 didn't do any of that statistical analysis, because we were required at that point in time to do a count that actually attempted to count individuals, some of who just won't participate.
But the net bonded debt per capita in 2009 was about $1,900. If we used that number.
But you notice the debts changed too. I mean, our debt.
Right, and that's because of debt rolling off and new debt.
Right. We issued the debt last year.
But because of the number being dropped for the population this year, it has caused the number of the debt per capita to go up according to the calculation.
Right.
And that's.
Well, the key, one of the questions would be in 2010, and in the 2010 number, 108,755, was that an actual count number? Was that an actual census count?
That was this federal.
Right.
Well, wouldn't we have done a census, though, in 2010?
Yes.
So is that the real number? Like, you know, 122.9 is the real number, because that's the actual count. And so, you know, if we look at it from a perspective of, you know, we either need to look, you know, guesstimate to guesstimate, or.
Apple staff.
Or count to count. I mean, you know, the thing.
Just needs to be consistent on that.
It says under the note, underneath that table, the special census was conducted 2008, which is not on the schedule. In 2018, the federal census was 2010, the others are estimated. And that's based, the estimates are based using the US Census estimates that we get every year.
And I think the point that we're talking about is we're looking at two different numbers because we're using two different measures in the same set of columns.
Right.
From a standpoint.
I mean, that's probably the way it's got to be, but.
Right.
It makes it kind of difficult to look at.
Is that, or just use the same number, which you know you're growing?
Right.
Well, I'll tell you.
But even if you just use the same number from 2017, that bonded debt per capita would come down pretty significantly.
Oh, yeah.
It.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at that point, we had another number that we were relying on, because we did a count.
Yeah, our special census actually hurt that appearance of the capita debt.
For this, but it did help us in getting state revenue.
State revenue, and that's why we did it, yeah.
Yes.
How accurate do we feel like, I see Mr. Whittaker sitting out there, how accurate do we feel like that that special census is?
Not. We have to do the special census to certify our state share revenue, and that's the number they use. They won't use the federal census, because it is calculated or estimated. And what we know is a large sector would not respond. We actually went door-to-door with the fire department, but, and then we have to get that certified, which means that they come back and they actually go door-to-door to verify that. And some of them they questioned, some of them they didn't, so I would, I think we're probably more aligned, excuse me, with the federal than we are. And young people today don't get their mail. And we tried a marketing with phones and apps, and they would open the app, they would respond back.
Right.
So, and we know how many that actually opened the app, and that's why I'm saying probably the actual number is closer to the federal than our count. We did the best we could. We just, and we have to actually have addresses for each of those.
Yeah, the door-to-door, it's going to get tougher and tougher to be able to get an accurate count on the special census.
It is. And we knew they were there. They just, they wouldn't even respond to the fire, and we didn't send the police, because we knew that would probably create a whole nother issue for us. So the fire department went out and for about three months did their best knocking on doors, and they would respond back and say, we know people here, but they wouldn't. And a lot of people would come and say, I give you my address and my name, so, I mean, this is a sign of times.
So if you take the federal census for 2019, it's estimated 136,372, so you divide that by the date, and you actually come out with 2,127, so you're looking at about.
Almost, I mean, it's 2016.
Right, exactly.
So I feel comfortable with the federal, and they're starting to conduct another federal census that will be coming out. In fact, I think the feds have just started that, so we'll even have new federal numbers, but I feel pretty comfortable with that. We knew going in, we had struggles that we would face this trying to get, and it's not just us. This was experienced all across the state. Every city that was trying to do a special census experienced the same thing that we did, so we weren't unique in that.
So for state shared revenue, we have equally bad data that we all use to divide up the state shared revenue.
Mr. Joe, if, you know, kind of a more typical look from a board like ours, would we typically be looking at the, would it be more typical for a group like us to look at the bonded debt number or the total everything number? You know, the difference between page 179 and 180, basically?
Yeah, that's a good distinction, because on 180, it does just include bonds. And of course, as you know, that there's various types of debt other than bonds, and that is included in 179, those numbers.
I think we just borrowed our last, our last borrowing we did as a bank loan instead of bonds. I think we just, we just borrowed our last, our last borrowing we did as a bank loan instead of bonds. So, you know, this is gonna get, does that mean this will be even kind of more skewed? Because next year, the bonds won't show up on the, on the page 180, but the debt will show up on page 179? Is that how we should expect that?
Well, the per capita number's on 179 at the end as well. If you look on page 179, the last column's per capita.
Yeah.
So it's all of it, where this one is just for bonds.
Yeah, so what I'm asking though is, if we're, if we're just looking at the bonded debt, that number's gonna improve substantially next year, likely. But this one's probably gonna not improve necessarily.
Yeah, I think it's more appropriate to look at 179.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's kind of, I was trying to get there, but I wasn't asking it in a very good way, because we.
The only exception on 179 is the revenue bonds, because revenue bonds have their own source of revenues. So we have to consider that those shouldn't really be calculated in the equation.
So that, that, just to make sure, on page 179, that 409 number, the total primary government, that includes our enterprise funds as well.
Yeah.
It does. You can see them, they're stretched across there in the columns. It includes every, every source, TML loans, state loans.
I always like to break it out to, I, I, when I look at it, and I don't know if this is the right way, Melissa, but to really break it out to, you know, enterprise funds, so Murfreesboro Water and Sewer, Murfreesboro Electric, although that is all city and Murfreesboro debt, and we're responsible for it ultimately. It's still good to be able to have, here's what Murfreesboro Water and Sewer is, here's what MED is. And then our general obligation bonds, whether that would be TML, or now the bank, the 58 million that we just did on the bank, the bank loan, then we could use that towards truly what I would say per capita income. Because that, you know, the only way you can repay those, those bonds is either sales tax or raising property tax. The, ultimately, the other bonds are gonna be repaid back through, through the rate payer.
You know, I mean, I think ultimately, if we, if we start to look at it strategically, to try to find out what direction we're going or whatever, we just need to make sure we're careful about what, what numbers we're looking at. And, I mean, I agree, you know, kind of, to me, the number that we would be wanting to measure would be kind of the 179 less the enterprise funds, you know? Everything except the enterprise funds, and maybe even if we've got revenue stuff in there that we want to back out, that is a project that's paying for, you know, it's paying for itself, we, we may be able to back that out too. But, you know, look, one thing I, if, if y'all don't have any more questions about that, I, you know, one thing that I'm look, that I noticed here, if we look at page 171, which is just sort of our different tax structures, you know, and then compare that really to what this, what this number looks like on our, on our population. You know, our property taxes in that same 10-year period have only increased short of 20%. And we're at 19.8% increase on our property taxes in a 10-year period.
And a lot of, a lot of that would be accounted for by growth in new property coming online and being valued. That's, that's where most.
The only way it grows.
Well, for 20 years, that's true.
Huh?
Yes, you're right, for 20 years.
So in this 10-year period, the increase is all in new growth. But the problem is, if you compare that to our, our population, federal numbers going from 101 to 136, our population has grown by 35%, and our property taxes have only grown by 19.8%. Now, if you got something in, that's the kind of stuff that makes my spirit a little uneasy about what direction we're going in. You know, it, it, the, the new people that have moved here, are they paying less taxes? I mean, what's the, what's the issue? What's the problem? Why isn't it more without us raising taxes? If they're paying the same rate that everybody who was here in 2008, it should have gone up by 35%. So either the number, either the, either the special census numbers are more accurate.
They're not paying the same rate.
They're paying the same rate I pay every year.
Well, the, but the rates.
But the rates.
Remember, the valuations change.
But each year, they pay the same rate. Anyone who was here before is paying currently, is what I meant. I'm sorry. They're not paying the same as I was in '08, but the, the same, everybody's paying the same rate, whether you moved here lately or lived here 20 years ago.
Yes.
The same assessed rate.
So, yeah, so what I'm, my point was, every, you know, the, if there's 35% growth in our population, you would expect there should be somewhere close to that.
I don't think you can necessarily look at it that way. And the reason why I say that is because the population is not gonna be with property tax. Because, so say your population, you've got 30,000 people who moved in here. Well, you may have a family of four, a family of five, and they're all living in one property. So your population's not gonna be related to what your asset growth is gonna be. Because I would think in this number.
That would only be true if you had a lot more four-people families moving in that lived than the number of four family, the four-people families that are, that were here prior to '09. So it'd have to be a big difference.
Well, the, the other confounding factor is that commercial and residential are, are assessed differently. So the grow, a growth of commercial and residential wouldn't be measured the same. It's.
I, I think the majority of what you're seeing in our increase in property tax, and this is just guessing.
It's commercial.
It's commercial.
That's even more problematic.
Well, but it's, at the same time, when you look at, at our growth in, in, in commercial and property tax, you look at, we've almost doubled our sales tax in 10 years. So that's, it's all based upon.
I guess it's kind of for some, for one way or another, the numbers don't seem to, to kind of gee-haw like I think that we would want them to.
And I'm afraid that there may be some underlying multifamily housing issues that are coming into play here too, because people come into town with all the apartments and stuff that we've got in, and you probably haven't seen the increases in the, the values so much of those properties that you would see in single-family residential homes.
Well, you may get more dollars per acre of property tax, but you get less dollars per person, probably.
That's correct.
So that's probably, that probably would explain a lot of it.
I, I can tell you, I had a, a customer who was talking about, he bought a house in Evergreen Farms 15 years ago, and he paid 109 for the house. And that same house, and they've done some things to the house, now it's gonna be marketed for like 219. So it, it's almost doubled in price over a 12 or 15-year period. But the assessed rate that he's still paying on a, per his tax rate, an assessed rate of what it was 10 years ago. So that's where, that's tough to, I mean, I remember, I remember in, I think it was, yeah, it was 12 and 13, 14, and then 15. I remember when our, our sales tax outpaced our property tax. I mean, I remember when that, when that hit, that our sales tax went, went above. But you can also see the dips that we had, if you go back to look at '08.
Have the sales tax rates, has, has our, what's happened to our sales tax rate in this timeframe right here, as far as the, the amount, the percentage?
Never changed.
Has it ever changed in that whole?
We're already maxed out at 9.75.
For that whole, that whole 10-year period? So. It doesn't really necessarily make sense. I mean, you know, is what I'm, what I'm, just from a perspective of, you would think that that would flow over, except maybe what you just said, that might, sure, that seems like that'd be a lot, but maybe that makes up that entire difference.
It, it'd be hard to look at, I mean, you'd really need to break it up to look at a commercial valuation, a residential valuation, and then.
I don't wanna keep you up here all night, Mr. Joe, but I mean, is that, is that something that you have? Do you, do y'all have breakdown between?
Yeah, I bet we could get it from.
I was just trying to remember, but.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's something you'd email us or.
Well, if you, if you look on your footnotes, page 71, it does break down our debt as to type between government.
Page 71?
71, uh-huh. It breaks down our government debt and our business type. Now, it does not break down our business type between water and electric, but it does break down our debt. It does not show it per capita, but it does show you our different types.
Yeah, and it kind of doesn't. Page 71?
Footnote F, the very last part of page footnote F, 71 in my book.
Were you asking about commercial values?
No, basically, just out of that $42 million of property taxes that was paid in 2018, how much of that was residential, and how much was commercial?
Yeah, that's, uh.
I'm sorry, I was looking at debt.
I'm not sure we.
I don't think we have that by type of property tax or assessments, not in here.
Okay.
We, we get that with our tax rolls each year, but we don't have it in here.
Just from the discussion, that would be kind of interesting to see what has happened with commercial, the nominal, commercial tax number relative to the nominal residential property tax. I mean, you know, strategically, we ought to be probably looking at that.
Nice, we can separate out.
Page 175 does have the, the appraised values and, and the assessed values, how they've grown, but.
What page?
175.
But that is combined.
Ah, okay.
I bet, Ms. Wright, I bet we could get, Mr. Mitchell could give us, I mean, it, wouldn't it be easy to pull up what the, that 46 million? What makes that, you know, what the?
I don't have it for every year, but I do have it for some years, because I request it every year. Sometimes with their, with their software changes, I've not been able to get it, but I, I'll be glad to provide what I have.
Well, I, I do have, our commercial property valuation, this is 2018 assessments, about 3 billion. Residential's about 8.3 billion. That's the value. So the assessment for the, for the assessments on those, commercials, 1.2 in round numbers, and the assessment for residential's 2 billion.
So, now, what, what would be the, so it was 8.3 billion?
That's the assessed value. So it would be half, in rough numbers, commercials half of residential. Commercial's assessed, however, at 40%, and residential's at 25%.
Yeah, I was trying to.
This would be, I like the idea of, of doing this in a work session, especially with the budget coming up.
Right.
So we can.
We can do that as part of the budget workshops.
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be great. You know, the one page, the pages I was just, had earmarked, pages 30 through 36, that you could look at, what our, in 2018, what we budgeted for, you know, individual departments, and then what our actuals were. And in most every department, most every department, we didn't spend what we had budgeted. We were under budget. But the thing that popped out to me is, you know, we talked last year, or maybe the year before, we, we spent a lot of time talking about slippage, you know, in our salaries, about what we budget and what, what we actually pay. In the police department, we budgeted 18.35 million in salary, and we were at 17.5. So altogether, it was like a mid 11, 1.1 million in salaries and benefits that we didn't pay, that we budgeted. And I think the majority of that is that slippage on people that are leaving and picking up. So there's some pretty big, big numbers. The fire department was almost half a million that we were, we were at too, which makes it tough to look at those budget numbers about what we're putting into fund balance, because it's, it's hard to, hard to measure that. But I mean, every department, I'm sure there's some extenuating circumstances on like the IT department. We had 925,000 budgeted for repairs and maintenance, and we only spent 400,000. So I'm sure there's some things that we may have not spent and pushed off, but, I mean, nonetheless, it looks like most of our departments were, were under in, in most everything they did. All right, do we have any other questions or comments? Mr. Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could we get a motion to accept the budget?
We need a, a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept it.
Or Mr. Shacklet?
So moved.
Triple double.
You're here.
Double second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
I mean, aye.
Here.
Mr. Shacklet?
Here.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
I think I'm on.
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into Lan, thank you, Mr. Joe. And you, you want to introduce your, your team that's helped you for, for the, the years of, I, I think I remember, help them, tell me maybe how long, because I, every year that I've been here, I think y'all have been, y'all have been working on that.
They like to sit out there, even though they do the majority of the work, of course. But Suzanne Vandiver here and Molly Patricus, they've been with me for a long time, and I'm happy to have them. I can't, I can't tell you how long, but.
Thank y'all for your hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Blomley, are you doing land, land use matters on schedule in public hearings?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We just have one to schedule tonight. It was one that the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on and voted to recommend its approval on February the 6th. Staff would recommend a public hearing date before the city council of April the 4th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Which one, which one is that? It, it's not listed on the agenda.
It is the Weston Village PUD Amendment for the Weston Village PUD located at New Salem Highway and Armstrong Valley Road.
That's gonna be the only one on that night?
We already have one, according to my, maybe my calendar's wrong, we already have a public hearing. I'm not saying not to have this one, but we already have another one also, right?
Not on April 4th. We have three scheduled for March the 21st, but nothing is scheduled yet for April the.
Okay.
Move we schedule April 4th public hearing.
Second.
Motion in second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Here.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank y'all. All right, you've got some appointments to the golf commission. Many of y'all, I don't know if, if several of y'all were at the, I want, I don't want to say retirement, but Mr. Bill Allen retired from the golf commission. He was the only chairman that the golf commission has ever had. He was there for 36 years, I think was the, the, the number. And so we are appointing, and let him know he's got big shoes to fill, Mr. Robert Sane, to replace the vacancy left by Mr. Allen. His term will expire January 31st, 2022. And then we need to reappoint Mr. Whit Turnbull and Mr. Larry Wilkerson for January 31st, 2022.
Are we in motion for that?
Please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right.
Can we drop back up, or go back up to licensing, so I can do the beer permit?
That's what I was, sorry, I skipped. We, we have several beer permits that we need to go through.
We have three regular beer permits, one for a restaurant at 1312 Northwest Broad Street, for an on-premise beer permit, one for a, it's listed as a gift as the type of applicant, but they, or a brewery, I believe. They have a combined, it's a taproom hub. And then we have another restaurant at 3284 Franklin Road, Suite G. Two of those are new locations, one's an ownership change. Then we have several networking events for Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce that are at various places across the, across the city. And we also have a couple fundraisers for Breakfast for Breakfast Rotary Club at Kennansburg Village. All of those special permits have met our requirements. The restaurant at 1312 needs to finish up its building codes inspections, as does the taproom at 1602 West Northfield Boulevard, Suite 8, and the restaurant at 3284 Franklin Road, Suite G. They have met our requirements for the background checks. So we would not issue those permits if you approve them tonight until they have finished their codes inspections. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Motion in a second.
Who made the second?
Oh, he said so moved. Kirk did. Who's the second? I think Ronnie said second. Yeah, Ronnie said second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
He's here.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have other business. It looks like Mr. Gore.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. We have a request to approve. We have a request to approve Task Order 19-03 with John Bouchard and Sons to replace a modulating valve. It's a settled water valve that maintains level on our settled water basins. This modulating valve, the, the quote to do the work is around, is $70,500. And this is pretty much an emergency purchase, so we would request your approval.
So moved. Second. Ms. Skels Harris, Mr. Lantz.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lantz.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Or any other business?
Mayor, I have one item that I laid out tonight that I need to present at a public meeting. This is going to the comptroller's office tomorrow. Tomorrow's the date we'll close our most recent loan for 58 million. And this is also going to be put on our website.
Okay, perfect.
And Mayor, if I could, just quickly, we had quite a bit of weather last week, and we activated our emergency operations center partially, so just want to give thanks, a great deal of appreciation to a few of the departments that responded from Thursday all through the weekend, the streets department, fire department, police department, water resources. Mr. Lee with GIS and some of our administrative team were, were active all weekend. Public safety is, of course, the core function of the city in, in an emergency situation. And knowing that our emergency operations center operated very well, it's all brand new, so it was good to exercise it a bit. Everything went smoothly, so, but we appreciate the employees and spending the weekend during this event.
Hey, I have one small thing, but really wanted to ask Mr. Tindall if you wouldn't, if the council's okay with this. I had a good meeting today with the mayor Franklin, and we were just shooting back ideas. But one thing we talked about is how nice it would be if we had, and when I say we, residents, had an app on their phone, and somehow we tied that into our GIS department, and, you know, someone could click on, on the app, and you could email the council member you wanted to email about an issue. But the other thing is if you see potholes that need to be fixed, or issues in roads, or, you know, I get emailed frequently about someone's put XYZ out in the road, that someone could easily pinpoint that and send that. But if we wouldn't ask, if we wouldn't mind asking Mr. Lilly to maybe look at that, I think that may be a, I'm sure there's a way to do that.
Murfreesboro Way's app.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
All roads are under construction.
Yeah.
And I did get an update from Mr. Griffith yesterday that next week, Middle Tennessee Boulevard is going to be open, I think it's Wednesday night. Does that sound right, Ms. Trelston? Wednesday or Thursday?
A lot of rain in the forecast.
You jinxed it.
Strong response. Another month now. That one's strong.
I know that's what I told Dr. McPhee, but it's Wednesday or Thursday night of next week, it'll be open, that lanes will be opening during the night, and then the paving is not going to be done until after graduation, the final paving. But I know we get asked a lot on what is probably the longest road project in the history of Murfreesboro, but that hopefully will, will be done. All right, any other business?
No, I'll tell you what, but I'm the second what Mr. Tindall said about all the folks who've put in a bunch of work. I mean, you know, we've gotten, we got a lot of calls, and we were on the news a little bit for some, you know, some issues that happened with a, any year flood that we have and stuff like that. And our folks did a really good job, and I appreciate Mr. Gore who helped me through a couple of things. And I, I will pass this along, I mean, no matter how, the stuff that you see and the stuff that we all witnessed in closing roads and all that stuff is certainly an inconvenience. But as I was walking out the door tonight to come here, my wife said, hey, I just, they just showed on the news that, and what she said, I can't, I haven't found it on here, but there was a, I think it's something like a thousand homes in Nashville that sewer actually backed up into their homes. You know, that's, we've had some, we've had some, a lot of good people working on this, and a lot of proactive work that's gone towards trying to avoid that kind of thing happening. And when, you know, in the last 10 years, I can remember, I guess, what seems like three 500-year flood type events. They're not technically, but they're strong, and, and, you know, we have some issues, but I want to say I appreciate what you guys do and what everybody does to keep it, keep it moving like it, like it should be and in the direction it should, so thanks.
Oh, yeah, we have a, we're definitely blessed in our city to have the finest employees anywhere. Definitely. God has blessed us.